I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. How about a roll call, city clerk?
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda, are there any deletions, additions, changes?
Prove adoption.
Second.
Give the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The ayes have it, we have an agenda. And now, item five will be the presentation by Kinder Morgan, Tank Farm Safety. Sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Allen Campbell. I'm with Kinder Morgan Energy Partners, I'm the director of project permitting for the Pacific region. We also have with us today Pete Murphy and Nicole Stewart, who work with Kinder Morgan up here in Northern California. Nicole Stewart is the manager of the local Brisbane terminal and also the manager of the Richmond terminal. So I have a presentation for you, first of all, I thank you for the invite, happy to come and visit and talk a bit about our facilities up here in Northern California. So I have a brief presentation for you, a bit about Kinder Morgan and a bit about our terminals here in Northern California, specifically our terminal in Brisbane, our pipelines in the community, and what we're doing in the maintenance and safety area. So objective is to provide some information to elected officials and public, and also talk a bit about our pipelines and our terminal here. Kinder Morgan is a nationwide company, one of the largest pipeline transportation companies in North America. We operate the infrastructure that moves various refined products around, should I wait a minute?
Yeah, just.
You guys don't have?
Yeah, we have a cable problem here.
Okay.
Are we getting this on our screens, are we supposed to get it on our screen?
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for waiting.
No problem, no problem. So we operate pipelines that move products around North America. As I said, we're nationwide, we operate liquid petroleum products that move gasoline, diesel, and jet, we move natural gas and so forth and so on around the United States. It's common carrier system, we don't own the product that's in our pipelines, we move it for other parties. So to some extent, we kind of work sort of like the railroad where we own the infrastructure that moves these products around the country. Here in the Pacific region, we just move refined petroleum products. Basically, Kinder Morgan purchased the assets of a number of pipeline companies, Santa Fe Pacific, Southern Pacific Pipeline, Calnev, and GATX. Here in the Pacific region, that covers Oregon, Washington, Arizona, Nevada, New Mexico, and the very westernmost part of Texas, we operate about 3,300 miles of pipelines. Pipelines in the facilities that we operate, operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So a quick overview map of our system, obviously the Northern Cal system's up here, kind of our north system, we have a pipeline that runs down through the Central Valley, one that goes up to Sacramento and then northward for there, one that goes over the Sierra Nevada, Torino, have a pretty extensive system down here in the southwest US between El Paso, Phoenix, and then the Los Angeles area as well. Here in the Pacific region, as I mentioned, we transport gasoline, diesel, and jet fuel. Sometimes people will refer to Kinder Morgan, you know, you'll read an article or something that says it's a gas pipeline. Well, it's not a natural gas pipeline here in the Pacific region, it's a gasoline pipeline.
What are the percentages out at the tank farm in Brisbane of those types of fuels?
Well, you know, I couldn't speak to that right off the top of my head, but we obviously receive and pump product over to the airport, and then we also provide all of the gasoline and diesel for basically all of the peninsula here out of that terminal. So whatever those percentages are, usually the biggest is gas and then diesel and jet. In this case, jet might be a little bit higher than it would otherwise because of the airport being nearby, but I'm not really sure about that off the top of my head.
Would you please provide that information?
Sure.
I would have expected to hear that because you're here in Brisbane, and it's an important information that you could have been prepared for.
That's no problem, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. So our terminal sits right here, it's fed by pipelines that come across the San Francisco Bay, we have two pipelines that come across the bay, there's a 12-inch pipeline and a 10-inch pipeline. I've got 21 storage tanks there, and then there's a pipeline that goes down to SFO. There's an older pipeline that's out of service, or I should say, an out-of-service pipeline that goes up here to where the rail yard is, and then there was an older pipeline that went down to a different part of SFO previously. But right now, the only permit pipeline leaving the terminal is the one that goes southward. Okay, two in, one out right now.
What about the trucks that come in and out of that facility?
Right, we'll talk about that too. So, as I said, there's two incoming pipelines, one outgoing, there's two out of service, 21 tanks, 600, basically 600,000 barrels of storage, and then there's truck racks for transport to local service stations. Trucks come into the facility, fill up with gasoline, take it to your local service station. But it comes into the terminal from the pipelines that come across the bay, okay? That's how it gets into the terminal, trucks come in, fill up, and then take it to your local service stations. In 2010, if I looked at the whole year and averaged it out over the entire year, we handled about an average of 77,000 barrels of product a day. About a third of it goes out over the rack, about two-thirds of it gets pumped to SFO. It all comes in by pipeline. So that's equivalent to about 350 tanker trucks in a day that's coming in via our pipeline system. Our facility is regulated by a large number of state and federal agencies. Overall, our pipeline system is regulated under the Department of Transportation, under the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, or FIMSA. Within the state of California, the California State Fire Marshal oversees our facilities. Then of course, we're also overseen by the EPA. The FERC sets the tariffs that we can charge the people who want to ship products on our pipeline. Various local wildlife, water, air agencies and so forth also oversee our facilities. The tanks at the facility get a periodic inspection per API 653, it's a specification for how the tanks are to be inspected. Basically, the tanks are drained at that time, they're internally inspected, welds are checked, so forth and so on, and then there's an evaluation of the tanks performed. The evaluation includes an evaluation of the shell of the tank, the foundation in the floor, the fixed roof, all of the tanks at our facility have fixed roofs, and most of them have an internal floating roof as well that minimizes the emissions from the tanks, and all of those are checked during this inspection. Appertainances, the pipes that come in and out, the valves and so forth, and as part of that, there's a seismic evaluation as well.
Excuse me, would you mind asking a question while we?
No, please do, please do.
Would you explain to me what does periodic mean? I mean, how often, daily, monthly, every 10 years, 25?
Yeah. The frequency of the inspections varies on a tank-by-tank basis. Basically, it's a frequency of somewhere between five years and 20 years, depending upon what you find in each inspection. If you're finding that there's a number of repairs needed, then you'll need to do inspections more frequently. So it's a sliding scale that depends upon what is found during the course of the inspection.
So would you be prepared to tell me about the periodic tank inspections that you have conducted at Kinder Morgan in our Brisbane site?
Brisbane, yeah, you know, we actually have a number of them coming up for this year, I think there's five or six tanks, Nicole, is that right? There's six tanks that are scheduled for inspection this year. Now, those, you know, we don't make that, that's not a public document, okay? That's something that we maintain and we share with the fire marshal when they audit our maintenance activities. So that's where that oversight takes place.
When was the last time the inspections were done that this year you're planning to inspect?
I don't know that right now.
You do not know?
I don't know that, I'd be happy to get it for you though.
You knew you were coming here tonight?
Yes, I did.
So what was the problem that you don't know, when was the inspection done in Brisbane?
Well, I'm aware that we're going to be doing it this year, so I don't know off the top of my head right now when the last inspection on every tank was.
Okay, when your manager comes later on, Nicole, would you know that since you're manager of this area? Would you know when was the inspection done in Brisbane site? Thank you.
Yes, no problem. We're also going to be testing the facility piping this year, that's a fairly new program that we're doing at our facilities where we're doing pressure testing of the piping at the facility, and that is also scheduled for 2011. The Brisbane terminal is located about four and a half miles east of the San Andreas Fault and about 14 miles west of the Hayward Fault, so those are probably the two biggest faults that we would be worried about. During the Loma Prieta earthquake in 1989, which had a lot of damage up here in the Bay Area, our terminal sustained no damage, okay? We didn't have any damage to our tanks, we didn't have any damage to our piping. There was a major earthquake down in the Imperial Valley last year, Easter Sunday, our Imperial terminal suffered a little bit of damage to some of those tanks, but nothing significant, we didn't have any significant releases or ruptures or anything like that. In a major seismic event, say on the San Andreas up here, similar to the 1906 earthquake, we would expect that we would sustain some damage, but we don't envision that we would have a situation where we would have a product released from the containment area, the dike area around our tanks, okay? What we've actually seen in some other natural disasters is that our facilities, when a great deal of infrastructure is down, our facilities actually are a resource for first responders. Following the hurricane Katrina down in the Gulf Coast area, our terminals down there were a major resource for first responders who were dealing with a large-scale natural disaster. So we think that we'll do well in a seismic event and that your first response personnel will be relying on our terminal to provide fuel as they deal with a widespread natural disaster, you know, if and when that happens. You know, I wanted to mention tsunami too, I did some research on that. The terminal sits outside any tsunami area that's projected for the area here. I want to talk about pipeline a little bit, we talked about the terminal for a bit, with regard to the pipeline. Major causes of incidents historically on petroleum pipelines has been either third-party hits, that's really the leading cause of issues on petroleum pipelines. You also have some cases of corrosion taking place on the pipeline, material defect, maybe an operator error, something like that. So in terms of pipeline protections, our pipelines are monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have operators in control centers, including at the Brisbane terminal and other places around Northern California, as well as at our facility down in Orange, our Orange Control Center, that can see pressures, levels of product in tanks, positions of valves, operations of pumps, that type of thing. And they monitor the pipeline system 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whenever an operating condition changes that puts something outside of a bound, of a range that should be considered normal, an alarm will sound to warn the operator on duty, let him know about that. We have block valves positioned strategically along the pipeline, the block valves at Brisbane are right at the terminal, and then there's another couple block valves between there and the airport. Pipeline protection, the right-of-way that the pipelines go down are mowed and maintained annually by Kinder Morgan. We conduct weekly oversight of our pipeline right-of-way, either by aerial overflight or by ground-based patrols. Obviously, sometimes we have fog up here, so we've got to do it on the ground, but it averages about once a week up here. It's really required every two weeks, but it's averaging between the aerial flights and the ground-based inspections of our right-of-ways about every week. Pipeline's got a protective coating around it, it's under cathodic protection to try to minimize the possibility of corrosion. We run tools called smart pigs, which is an internal inspection tool that runs through the pipeline and can evaluate or sense if there's a place where someone's hit the pipeline or if there's a place where there's corrosion starting. I should say that those pigs are run through the pipeline at five-year intervals. The pipeline between Brisbane and SFO, that was run in 2009, I believe. Over 99% of our Kinder Morgan's pipelines are pigable, we can run these tools through them, detect if there's a problem starting, and get in and be able to fix it. All of the pipelines up here, pipelines into Brisbane, the pipelines from Brisbane out, those are all pigable pipelines. I mentioned that the leading cause of pipeline accidents is third-party damage. One of the things that we're really talking with people about is the necessity to call before anyone digs, performs any construction project. There's a statewide, actually I think it's nationwide, 811 number for utility marking, and it's very important for people to know about that, not just contractors, but also homeowners, everyone, when you're doing a project where you're going to be digging, whether it's planting a tree, digging with a backhoe or so forth and so on, it's very important to call 811. All of the utilities will come out and mark utilities in the area, no charge to the person doing the work. We will have somebody out there within 48 hours, usually sooner. If you're going to be working close to our pipeline, we will put someone out there to monitor the work to make sure that the work's done in a safe manner, that our pipeline's protected, and that people are not hitting our pipeline. It's very, I can't stress how important that is, that people understand that we need to call and have utilities marked. So much of the infrastructure, so much of the utility has gone subsurface, that it's very, very important that people make those calls. We have emergency response plans, we work with local first responders to put together those plans and then do periodic training activities. We actually have a training drill scheduled this June at the Brisbane terminal with your local fire department.
When was your last one?
I don't know that. I know when the next one is, is this June, but I don't know when the previous one was. The other thing that we were asked about was, from an infrastructure standpoint, sort of terrorism kind of security, and we do have a security plan in place for the facility. It covers all kinds of activities that the operators need to be ready to take in different events, okay? The facility is manned 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, there are people at the facility. And there's a specific set of procedures they're supposed to go through. If someone's hanging around taking photos, if they're seeing vehicles come by and hang out outside, if there's airplanes circling overhead, there's a specific notification procedure that they're supposed to go through, and we train on that annually. If you're interested in Kinder Morgan's safety statistics, you can pull it off our website, if you go to kindermorgan.com and follow the environmental health and safety link, the EHS link, you can get information about the safety statistics for our company. Mailers are sent each year to public located within 660 feet of the pipeline, mailers are also sent to emergency responders in the area, public officials, excavators, contractors. We do presentations to city councils, we do presentations to emergency responders, and we conduct annual drills at various locations with emergency responders. Again, I mentioned that our company website is www.kindermorgan.com, and there's a section there about public awareness, both for contractors, for elected officials, for city officials, as well as for the general public, and I would encourage you to take a look at that. If you want to visit the Brisbane terminal, there's a number, you can get in touch with Nicole and we can set something up if you're interested. And if you have other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, first I'd like to thank you for being here. I've been on the city council since 1995, I don't remember ever seeing anybody from Kindergartner and Kinder Morgan making any presentation in this city council. So thank you for coming here tonight. Would you please tell me about what are your plans for this site? Are you planning to continue being in Brisbane? Any plan for relocation, any plan for remodeling, any of that stuff?
Right, we're planning to continue to operate the terminal, we're not planning to relocate. At this point, we don't have any major expansion plans, we're planning to continue to operate the facility in its current mode.
Okay, so as you know, you said you carry about 77,000 barrels per day. Airport is expanding, I mean, expansion capacity is increasing every two minutes, and they're going to expand, they're going to need more oil. So you're going to provide more gasoline and so forth and so on. Who decides how much, how many trucks can you come and go in Brisbane? Who decides that?
Well, the airport isn't fed by trucks, the airport's fed by pipeline.
Pipelines.
Okay, so basically what happens is the shippers, the people who own the product, whether it's an oil company that's refined the product or the airlines who have purchased the product, they nominate time on our pipeline, and they ask us to ship a certain amount of product from point A to point B. Say in the case of the airlines that pick it up at a refinery up here, ask us to move it through our pipeline system, through our Brisbane terminal, down our pipeline to the airport. So they nominate how many barrels they want to ship on our pipeline, okay? And then provided we have the capacity, we ship it for them.
But you do have trucks in Brisbane?
That's correct.
So my apology for saying it in another way. How many trucks do you have in Brisbane on a single day, every day?
It varies, you know, really it's determined by, again, what the need is at the service stations, we don't.
Give me a number.
The ballpark, if I were to look at, say, 2010, and average the whole year, it's probably about 100 trucks a day. Come into our terminal, pick up fuel, and carry it out to your local service stations throughout the peninsula.
And if you have to increase the trucks in Brisbane, you are the one that decides that this year in 2011, you'd like to bring 200 trucks?
No, we're not the ones who decide.
Okay.
The people that own the fuel and want to pick it up from our terminal are the ones who decide. They would in that case ask us to ship product from a refinery to our terminal, and then they would arrange to have people come pick it up. So as I said, we don't own the product, we ship it for others. They indicate we want to move this much product and we want to pick up this much product by trucks, and that's determined by how much product people are using at their local service stations.
And you mentioned you do not recall about the inspections that you've conducted in Brisbane facilities and so?
No, it's not that I don't recall, it's that it's not something I researched before I came, and I apologize, I'd be happy to get you that information.
Thank you. So I had another question. In the communities that you have had, your facilities, what kind of involvement have you had? How have you shown to be a good neighbor in that community?
Well, you know, one of the things we do is we try to reach out to local first responders and form a good relationship there, and make sure that our people are talking with them and doing training events with them. You know, since some of the incidents in the past year, there's been a lot of interest from city councils, city public works departments, in terms of trying to form more communication between our company and the communities in which we're located. So that's something we're actively doing, is offering to come and talk to city councils, talk to public works departments, that type of thing.
Well, as I mentioned, I had never seen Kinder Morgan in any of our events in town, involvement whatsoever. Speak about what you have done with the community of Brisbane.
Well, you know, one of the things that I think if we go back, and I'm going to have to ask for some help, I think, from Pete and Nicole here, but I think if you go back a number of years, one of the comments I made when I came up here was, how come the tanks are tan, not white? Because our standard is that our tanks will be white, because that minimizes the amount of heat and so forth and so on, and in general, it's our standard. And Nicole explained to me that the community, at some point, and I don't know when that took place, it may be some years ago, the community had asked that we make the tanks tan rather than white, so they wouldn't stand out quite so much, and so we worked with the city on that. I think there was another instance, not some time back, in which we worked with the city on some landscaping work, or helped fund some landscaping account or something like that.
It must have been in 80s.
Yeah, I don't know when it was, you know.
Probably, yeah, 1990, 1990. I haven't seen anybody here, so your definition of community involvement is interesting to me, that coloring a tank cream versus when you talk about community involvement has incredible amount of involvement with schools, with the community, with the events that they have. So wanting to know your involvement in this community, if you haven't done, it would be really good to come back and say, we really haven't done it, and then I can ask you, what are your future plans? How do you want to be a good neighbor in Brisbane?
You know, council member, I would be more than happy at some point to come and visit with you and find out some of the needs in the community, and it's something we can talk about. I mean, we're making a commitment, we're coming today, we're saying we want to communicate, and so I would be more than happy to come back and visit with you and learn more in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, that was actually pretty educational, because I always understood that when gas was delivered, it actually came from the terminals in the East Bay, you know, whether it be Pittsburgh or somewhere out there where they do the refinery at, that it was actually trucked around the bay, not across the bridges, but it's actually pumped to your terminal. So how far down do you deliver? You said the peninsula, you don't go as far as San Jose.
Well, we have a terminal in San Jose as well.
I see.
Okay, so there's product, you know, I don't know where the midpoint is, and actually, we don't decide. The shippers, they move the product to one of the terminals, they just say, move these barrels to Brisbane, or move these barrels to San Jose. So there must be some point in between in which, for them, it's cost-effective either to pick it up in San Jose or to pick it up in Brisbane.
Yeah, so traditionally, the price of gas is much higher in this end of the peninsula, and is that because your terminal charges are higher?
We actually have very little to do with what the price of gas is.
Really?
Again, we don't own the gas, we don't own the diesel, we don't own the jet, it goes through our system, we just ship it. The amount that we can charge the shippers, say, you know, an airline or an oil company or something like that, to move product down our system is regulated either by the CPUC within the state of California or by the FERC nationwide. So that tariff is set, again, we're a common carrier on the pipeline.
Okay, it's interesting though, because traditionally, or historically, the prices have been much higher here than they have been in San Jose or in the South Bay, so it's real interesting, because it's probably about the same distance of travel, you know. Thanks for explaining how you do the internal inspection of the pipelines. Now, you said 90% of your pipelines are pigable.
I said over 99%.
99%, so that means of your whole system nationwide?
I'm talking about, yes, of our liquid pipelines, yes. I don't know about the gas, I assume a fair number of those are as well, but I don't work on the gas side, so I don't want to speak to their system. But in terms of our liquids pipelines, yes, over 99% of them are pigable.
So that means those shut?
I'm talking about mileage, not individual lines.
Yeah, and so going through the shut-off valves, those shut-off valves have the same 100% open diameter as the pipeline itself?
The smart pig can get through there, correct.
Yeah, okay. Now, you were talking about pressure testing of the tanks, that's part of the inspection, so do you have an idea or?
Yeah, actually, we don't pressure test the tanks, because the tanks are not pressurized, okay? They're not pressure tanks, the product sits in there just at atmospheric pressure, it's not like a propane tank that you might have on your backyard barbecue where things are in there under pressure, that's not the case, they're atmospheric pressure tanks, so. So, the gasoline or the diesel is just in there at local pressure, at the local atmos-
Static.
Static atmospheric pressure. When I was talking about pressure testing, I was talking about the pipes that go to and from the tanks, because the tanks are hooked up to a manifold that then goes over to the rack where the trucks could come or over to the pumps that would ship to the airport. So, that piping is what we're going to do pressure testing on.
Okay. And what pressure do you test it at?
Oh, gosh. I don't know. I don't know that right now. Those are low-pressure pipelines within the facility. It's probably, you know, fifty to a hundred PSI or something like that. But that's something I can get you if you're really interested.
Okay. Yeah. And just kind of curious. I think our local fire marshal would be interested in that.
Yeah. Well, you know, as I said, we're working closely with them. We'll certainly share that information with them.
Okay. And you had mentioned in regards to the tsunami, that this doesn't fall within that area?
Yeah. You know, the maps that I can see from Homeland Security and State of California, when we've researched it, are facilities outside of the expected inundation area.
Now, how about with, you know, global climate change happening and sea level rise potentially, because you are right at sea level?
You know, that's not something I want to speculate on, but I haven't seen a definitive study on that in terms of putting those two things together. I doubt that it's going to be significant relative to our facility, because the area of inundation, the limit of it is so far away from our facility. It just doesn't, it didn't, I can't imagine that that would be, make a big difference. But I don't want to speculate too much about it.
What are you, about two feet above sea level?
I think we're more like, in terms of our tanks, I think we're more like about ten or fifteen.
Above sea level?
Yeah, I believe so. Nicole?
Eighteen.
Okay.
You're on solid ground, right?
Yeah. The tanks are underlaid by bedrock. That's correct.
Okay. And, but the mountain itself had been cut away a number of years ago for the railroad.
Right.
And I think those tanks, where they built on-
They're built on bedrock.
Bedrock, okay. Now, around your facility, though, you have a lot of differential settlement.
There is fill out, when you get out in the parking area, out by the offices and the racks and so forth, right?
Well, right next to our public works area, there's, I mean, there's a separation area. It looks like heavy rains. It fills up with two or three feet of water. And there's really no drainage here or what?
Excuse me, ma'am. You need to come, if you're talking, you need to be on the microphone so people can hear you.
My apologies.
That's okay.
We actually, because of the settlement that the facility is undergoing, we do have a program of assessment on the facility that every five years, we come out, we reassess what has settled, what we need to do to protect it. And as Alan was saying, it's mostly around our offices at this point, that we're really seeing some settling and some in the parking lot area. So, we need to regrade every once in a while to make sure that we take-
Right. You have some real unsightly undermining, actually. Looks like it's going on. It looks like nothing's really been done. And I'm just wondering, do you have a program?
We are protecting this. That, again, some of the sort of aesthetics of it, in fact, we're putting little, you know, blocks in front of the buildings to hide some of that, mask some of that. But again, every five years, we do an assessment. I believe we're due in 2014 for our next one.
Yeah. And what about the south end? It looks like nothing's really been done. The fences-
For the yard? Yeah. We do monitor the fences for physical security, and so, we update those when we need to, if there's a risk to the facility in terms of physical security to the facility. But other than that, we're just sort of maintaining what's going on, because we're not sure how far it's going to settle. It is on landfill there.
So, like, yeah, I realize that. We have, we own Lagoon Road, so, which gets beat up. And it's, yeah, I mean, it's on the same thing. It's the same issue, but it's a high-maintenance issue. But to me, it looks like not much has really been done on that south end. It just kind of like, you know.
The southern end of the facility is less aesthetically pleasing than the rest of it for certain.
Yeah.
That's something that, I'm a relatively new manager to this facility, and that's high on my hit list of, you know, beautifying the facility a little bit, just to make it look more aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah. I mean, you know, the facility is built, I guess, in the sixties, mid-sixties, somewhere around there. And, you know, it's always been kind of a controversy, center of controversy of ugly, I guess you'd call it, in the city. And it's in our front yard. And it's like, how do you disguise that white elephant?
We paint it tan.
Yeah. Paint the tanks pink, huh?
There you go.
Yeah. Interesting. So, have you, you know, sir, you made references to doing exercises, thank you, with community civil emergency volunteers. Have you ever done with the city of Brisbane, with our volunteers?
You know, what we do is we do those on an annual basis and in different areas around Northern California here. And first responders in the area receive an invitation to come to that. Sometimes they respond, sometimes they don't. I don't know if your local first responders have been involved previously or not in those drills, but I do know that they're planning to attend this one.
Let me ask that to our OES commander, Randy Bro. Have we ever received invitations or have we ever worked with them?
Not for the community emergency volunteers, sir, but I believe that through the North County Fire Authority, they've been out there on a couple of different exercises to match up with their equipment.
Okay. All right. Is that something that we'd want to do in the future?
I think we should continue the communication with the public safety first responders, absolutely, with fire authorities, sir, but I don't think we'd want our civilian emergency volunteers involved in that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much for answering the questions. I'm sure we're going to have some questions from the community, too, once the rest of the council finishes. But we look forward to meeting with you in regards to Seppi's request on what he can do for, you know, the community and stuff like that.
Great, great.
I have a few questions, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you for attending tonight. Let's see. In regards to the site and painting, and Nicole, perhaps if you could come back, the tank farm in Richmond, is that part of your facility as well?
That is our-
It depends which tank farm you're referring to, sir.
The one that you see when you're crossing the-
That's Chevron refinery, actually, on the hills with all the different levels.
Yeah. So, when you're coming off of the Richmond Bridge, that is not your facility, okay? You know, that, I mean, I'm no fan of a tank farm, but I mean, at least, they have done a good effort to blend in with the hillside. And I'm glad that the tanks aren't white, but it's been a long time since they've been painted. And I see that some painting is being done. I mean, because the rust was showing and it was, yes. So-
Would you respond into the mic, please?
The tanks are painted while we do the API inspections. We assess the quality of the paint, and that's when we paint them.
Okay. Do you ever, at any of your facilities, paint them a more camouflage type of array of colors, just to blend in?
Almost all of our facilities are white, sir. And then, there are very few that are tan. I think on a couple of cases, we have an eight-one-one logo painted on the tanks to remind people to call before they dig. But that's about the extent of what we're doing in terms of painting different colors.
Yeah. Okay. And so, with that tan color, do you correspond with the city about that shade of tan, or you just-
That was in agreement with the city.
Okay. So, when-
Several years ago, that the city preferred it to be tan. And so, that's what we did.
Okay. And when do you paint those tanks? Every-
Again, with the API inspections. So, between fifteen and twenty years or when the paint warrants it. Some of our facilities are closer to seawater, for example, so they get painted more frequently, because there's a higher degradation there. That sort of thing is what we consider.
Okay. Yeah. It'd be nice if they were painted more often, just so that they don't look so much of an eyesore.
Larger tanks that are sort of facing Brisbane are both being painted this year.
Yeah, I saw that.
There's some of the more discolored paintings. They haven't started yet, the painting.
I thought I saw some-
There are two being painted right now.
Yes.
But the two of the larger ones that are off to the side are being painted later this year.
Okay. And then, you touched upon the road conditions. So, with the heavy rains and then trying to deal with the truck traffic, it is, at times, a hazard. Is there anything that you feel that you can do to help alleviate that?
We don't own the road, but we would certainly be willing to discuss with the city best ways of maintaining it. We could also give recommendations to our truck drivers to possibly use an alternative or something along those-
Yeah. Well, you know, just off the side of the road, I mean, it looks like it goes into your property. So, it's just collecting-
Our driveway there?
It might be right before your driveway. It's where the big puddle is right now. It's just right before your driveway.
It's on the south end.
There is not very good drainage there.
No, there's not. No. So, I mean, it'd be great if there was, you know, something that you could work with the city engineer in regards to perhaps for-
I'd go through those kinds of conversations, absolutely.
You would? Okay, great, great. Let's see. How many people work at the facility right now?
Eight.
Eight, okay. Any of them from Brisbane?
I don't believe so. I believe the rent's a little high.
Okay. So, no Brisbane folks work at the facility. Okay. And so, okay, so we have eight people working there. And, you know, we touched upon some of the safety concerns. I mean, that's why you're here today.
Right.
Right? I mean, you have a situation in Japan, you know, with earthquakes, and we live in an earthquake area. And so, you know, that, and we had the incident in San Bruno. So, that's very much on everyone's mind is, okay, we have, in Brisbane, is, are these tank farms with this explosive material? And, you know, how safe is it?
I mean, to clarify that a little bit, is, again, the tanks are not pressurized.
Yes. No, 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 no. But the pipes, yes, the pipes are-
Like the big natural gas spheres or big propane tanks. Okay. Now, that being said, the liquids we store it are flammable, and in the case of gasoline, it's highly flammable. So, we need to be very careful. But I wouldn't use the term explosive. I would be a little cautious on that.
Okay. All right.
They're not pressurized.
Sure. All right. Now, you mentioned, you know, working with the fire department.
Right.
And so, you know, the first response people, you know, a lot of the training that goes into helping these people, you know, have the expertise, you know, costs money. And at any of your other facilities, do you contribute to the training of some of these first response people so that they're, so they can be knowledgeable in dealing with an emergency if it happens?
Right. Nicole, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, for instance, the training exercise that we're having in June, we're hosting and handling the cost to put that on.
Okay. Good, good. And our city engineer, Randy, you're not recommending that the CEVs be a part of that?
No, sir. I think that's more appropriate for the public safety first responders.
Okay. And does that also include police department officials as well? So, not just fire?
No. We've had, in the past, we've had a San Jose drill last year. We had a San Jose fire, San Jose police on hand. We've also had involvement from other hazmat-type groups on other drills that we've done. So, Randy, if you wanted to come and observe, more than welcome to have him there to watch what we're doing. But these are, we like to make these as inclusive as we can, so that we can have. In the case of a real emergency, we'd want the fire and the police on hand. So, we'd want them to see how we would respond to an emergency and provide us feedback, let us know how they would like to integrate with us and integrated command, that sort of thing as well. So.
Okay. You talked about the potential of a terrorist attack. You know, after nine-eleven, that was also in everyone's mind here, you know? And, of course, there's this heightened awareness, awareness all across the country, you know, different facilities, whether they're making fertilizer or, you know. So, has there been any suspicious activity that's been recorded at your facility?
There has not, in my review of the records, which goes back to about 2002, 2001, around that timeframe. The closest thing we came was that someone was throwing rocks at our operators from outside the fence line. We did call the police. I actually mentioned it to Lester earlier. He's like, yeah, I remember that. We didn't actually find the guy who was throwing rocks, probably some hoodlum or something. But we do have a site-specific security plan, and we are in touch with DHS in order to keep ourselves apprised of the recent threats, activity in the area and across the country. So, we are on top of that as well. We also have security drills that we drill with our personnel on our plan specifically. Our plan includes checklists for all sorts of different types of suspicious activity that we report internally, that goes up to our security office, which then liaises with either local law enforcement or DHS, whichever is more appropriate.
Okay. And do you have an annual or bi-annual with the police chief to just kind of go over here?
As part of my emergency responder presentations that I do, I do invite local police to take part. And I have reached out earlier today to see if they want me to come and talk to them about what we've got going on at our facility. I moved to this facility in March, or February, sorry, of this year. Last year, the facility was out. I liaise with several different police forces to sort of get engaged, get that communication going, have them come to our facility, check us out, see what they think. So, that's the type of communication we very much want.
Okay. And I guess eight people at the facility is enough to thwart any kind of mischief that might happen?
Lots of sharp fences.
All right, all right. You know, the last thing is, and Councilmember Conway mentioned it, you know, when the tank farm was constructed back in the sixties, the community, you know, you guys aren't our biggest fans, right? I mean-
We're perfectly good fans of Brisbane.
Yeah.
I understand that you're not big fans of-
I mean, big fans, yeah, of your operation. That's what I mean. You know, initially, it was, you know, we thought that we were going to make some money off of this operation, right? I mean, that was the intent. And then, it didn't turn out that way. And I think that's part of the sore spot with the community, one of the sore spots. In the facilities that you have around the country, are there types of distribution fees? I know that you don't own the product, but when trucks come and pick up, I mean-
No, that's not something typically that we see. Really, the main source of revenues that we pay in counties and cities is through our property taxes at our facilities. That's really one of the major, major aspects of how we, I guess, pay taxes into the community.
Sure. Well, I know maybe it's not typical, but do you know of any incidents?
I'm aware of any instance where that's the case.
Okay. So, okay. All right. Well, again, I appreciate you coming today. And, you know, I'm new on the council, but Councilmember Richardson's been on the council for a long time, and the other council members. And, yeah, I'm glad that you're reaching out to us, that there hasn't been that, that, well, at least on this level, I'm sure that with staff. But when you come before us today, you're really coming before the community. And that's a good sign. So, thank you.
Good.
Finally. It's my understanding that the tanks are the only things that are built on solid rock out there. The rest of the facility is on loose soil, not loose soil, but not rock.
Film material.
And the reason for that is because you didn't want any shifting in the tanks with the pipes going through them, et cetera. The other thing, when you, do you still use those floating bladders inside the tanks? In other words, as the fuel goes up, this bladder goes up. And the purpose of that was to prevent any vapors getting caught in between the fuel and the roof of the tank.
Right, yeah.
And thereby causing you a little embarrassment.
Right.
Put it mildly.
Right. The fuel has a floating roof on it.
Okay. That's what I want to ask. The other thing is, you talked about pigs.
I get that.
And I'm, I've had a misfortune of being exposed to some of this. We had a leak on Lagoon, and it came from one of your pipelines, and it actually entered into the lagoon. So, needless to say, by the time we got through, I don't know how many state and federal agencies were there, but there was a bunch. And what was finally determined was that when these pipes were laid into the ground, they were laid on pea gravel. And somehow, somebody dented a tank, and over the years of water running through it, or fuel, excuse me, running through it, caused it to leak and discharged that much fuel. And I'm just curious why a pig would not have picked that up.
When did that occur?
That occurred about the eighties.
Yeah, yeah. The whole technology of internal inspection of pipelines has just gone through a tremendous amount of development in the past ten years. And the regulations that require us to run internal inspections have changed dramatically since the eighties or the nineties in terms of frequency that we have to do the tools, even the availability of the tools. The tools that we have now that might have been able to detect that probably weren't- The tools that we have now that might have been able to detect that probably weren't even available back then. So, there really has been a tremendous amount of development in that area in terms of tools that we can run through the pipeline to measure the wall thickness, to look for any places where corrosion might be starting, to look for incipient cracks, anything like that. They're just, I just can't tell you how much that technology has developed in the past 10 years. So, really, we're in a much different world in terms of our ability to maintain the pipelines and internally inspect them now.
And I appreciate that. It's one thing when it's leaking on top of the soil, and you can see the product and you can deal with it. It's another thing if you spring a leak underneath the bay. That's going to be a real catastrophe, and that's a concern for me. But if you've assured us that technology has moved a little bit, as it should have over the years, and I appreciate you coming down tonight, answering, fielding the questions and answering them. If you don't mind, we have a person from the public that would like to ask something from you, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Mr. Allison, are you here? Please, would you come up to the mic?
Sure, well.
Kendra Morgan purchased that terminal in, what, '97 or '98 from Southern Pacific Pipeline Partners?
I believe so, yeah.
Just prior to that, this company called Alton Geoscience did some testing there. And may I read this real quickly? They had a website that has since been removed. From the Alton Geoscience Project Experience website, customer, Santa Fe Pacific Pipeline Partners LP, site location, Brisbane Terminal, Brisbane, California. This site contains numerous above-ground storage tanks that store and transfer refined petroleum fuel products. The eastern portion of the terminal was previously part of the former Brisbane Municipal Anfield, which was in operation up until 1967. And to assess this site, 21 onsite monitoring wells, four offsite monitoring wells, and four onsite soil borings were drilled using hollow stem logger and air rotary drilling techniques, strict health and blah, blah, blah. Free, oh, I'm sorry, groundwater was encountered at depths ranging from five to 20 feet below grade. Both free product, I assume that's gasoline, does that sound right, free product? Both free product and dissolved phase hydrocarbons were discovered. Because much of the site is located on a former landfill, chlorinated solvents were also detected in groundwater. Alton's activities include characterization of the extent of the hydrocarbon plume beneath the terminal, identification of the source areas, and distinguishing the terminal plumes from those generated by the landfill and adjacent railroad operations. Alton performed aquifer groundwater pumping tests in both fractured bedrock and landfill areas to assess remediation techniques. Test results will be used to design a well-field array to effectively recover free product and dissolved phase contaminants from each portion of the site. Alton is currently developing a RAP, I don't know what that is, an engineering design to be followed by remediation system construction and operation maintenance activities. I called Alton, and they said that after they did this testing for Southern Pacific, Southern Pacific told them they didn't want them to do any of the remediation. My question is, when Kendra Morgan purchased the site, did you stop those leaks?
Um...
Thanks.
What, I'm sorry, what was the date of that report?
It didn't have a date on it, but since it was done for Southern Pacific Pipeline Partners.
Back in the...
Then it had to be prior to your purchase of the facility.
Historically, we've had a couple, number of occasions where we've had some leaks in our, at the facility, prior to our purchase of it, as well as after our purchase of it. Some of them have been in the manifold area, where we have lots of valves and so forth and so on. That's an area that we are really focusing on now. We've done a lot of great work in terms of the pipeline. We don't have any leaks ongoing right now. We have this API 653 inspections. We have this pressure testing regime that we're going through. And that is really an area that we're paying a lot of attention to at our terminals and facilities to try to minimize and eliminate as meant, leaks throughout our systems.
Thank you, sir.
Si, if you could. RAP is a remedial action plan, and usually that comes through the Regional Water Quality Board, or...
They test twice a year.
Hold on a second, Glenn, yeah. So, was there, did...
We have a remedial action plan in place with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and they are overseeing the work at the facility regarding the previous releases.
Okay, all right. So, that's part of it.
Okay, thank you.
The one question, may I ask it again? Do you know of any repair work that was done to stop the leaks? Was the main question.
There's been quite a bit of repair work that has taken place historically. If we find something that's a problem, we fix it. We do repairs on valves. We do repairs on valve seals. We do repairs on pump seals. When we do the API inspections of the tank, if we find a place where there's some welds that need some upgrading or repair, not necessarily leaking, but need to be fixed, that's something we do as well. So, there's constantly maintenance activities going on at the facility.
Thank you.
So, that wrapped, and the remedial action plan then through the Regional Water Quality Board is addressing the plume issue that Mr. Allison was referring to?
Correct.
Okay.
And I also have a slip from former Mayor Clara Johnson. Clara?
Clara Johnson, a mid-Brisbane resident and a member of the Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group. I guess I'll, I'm gonna start at the end. I'd really like to see you get really aggressive with Kendra Morgan. I think it's wonderful that they've been here for over 40 years and not had a major accident. And I appreciate that they brought three people here tonight. And, but I don't think anybody is really aggressive with them. And what bothers me so much is the issues here are toxic contamination of the land, water, and air, just from them, the emergency response, and the tentative way that everybody acts about it. I'd like to see you talk to the regulators, because you're the ones who have the power, and say to the fire marshal, "We want you to aggressively regulate this facility." I think the only way that you can get rid of a facility like this, which some people here do, I don't necessarily want to put them out of business, but I think is that they're a public nuisance. That's, I think that's the key. Well, I think they approach a public nuisance on several fronts. Because of, and when we talk about aesthetics, everybody kind of puts a value on it, like it's less. Well, but if you've all lived by that facility for 30 years, it isn't less. And really, some of the aesthetics are related to safety. And also communication. Now, I think it's great that they're going to have an inspection in June, but in a way, that's also a way to just put you off. Because it's like, are you going to invite them back after June and find out what they did, you know, what needed to be done? Because if you don't, you won't know if anything was done. And in, I want, in terms of toxic contamination, this was a toxic hotspot for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District at one time. And the only reason it isn't now is because they put a scrubber on it. They took out about 97% of what came out of it. And what came out of it a long time ago, when they were only processing 2 million gallons, or maybe a little less, was something that got it to the point of being one of the worst places around the bay. And so, that kind of shows you that, thank heaven, we have the scrubber, but that it was putting many, many hundreds of tons of pollution into the air, which it's much reduced at this point. But I think that the, I think that the City of Brisbane should get the reports from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District of what's coming out of the scrubber and what their comments are. I think that the fact that there is contamination with MTBE in it, which looks like it came from their facility on the adjacent land that belongs to UPC, I think, I'm pretty sure, is an issue that is, there is a leak there. You know, there of some sort, but have they fixed it? I don't know. I don't think anyone knows. I mean, if it's not getting worse, I guess we all assume that, well, that must mean that they fixed it. And I think in emergency response, the BBQ MD invited the fire marshal to come here. Fire marshal did come here, spoke about it. We were able to, even maybe, I believe there was a visit to the facility. And the fire authority came, and I appreciate all of that. But the problem is, is that it looked to me as though everybody was rather tentative. You know, they're not really trained here to deal with a tank farm, and they're well aware that the fire marshal, who is nowhere near here, has jurisdiction. There needs to be something done to make sure that there's a coherent, efficient way in which everybody's going to react when there is a fire there. And it's not being done. And I don't blame anybody, but I just think that it would be better for all of us if that were done. As far as the aesthetics are concerned, when you were discussing the, all of the area that has been subsiding and is kind of a mess, there are places where that fence is four feet tall, you know, because it started out being six feet tall, but on the other side now, it's, you know, the ground's come up. And I don't see, it doesn't appear to be being fixed, you know. So, do we, how many, do we wait another 30 years before we get it fixed? It's a mess. There's asphalt out there that's covered with hydrocarbons, and then it's got a huge pond on it, and the pond is evaporating. So, that means that hydrocarbons are evaporating into the air. Couldn't get Bay Area Air Quality Management too interested in that, but, you know, maybe a city council could. Because it should be an issue over time. Short time? No. It's kind of like radiation. Longer time, it is more of an issue because it's, there's more hydrocarbons evaporating. And this kind of a winter that we've had would have meant an awful lot of them have been evaporating in the air. And the, as far as the, there used to be, it's 2 million gallons. It's gone up to 3.2. Someone asked about volume increase. You know, that was when we asked a few, three or four years ago, we were told, "Well, it's just something over two." And now it's 3.2. And the 100 trucks a day, that has relevance on the freeways, I think. And I think that the testing of the valves, we're all accustomed to something that's been there a long time. So, these valves are 30 years older than they, than, or not 30 years older, but they're over 45 years old. It's like, you know, should they, should they be replaced? What is the standard in the industry of the replacement of valves? That is, I think, one of the things they have a big problem is valve leaking, that they're checking it, they're being very careful about it. I'm glad to hear that. Maybe they ought to be replaced. They built the tanks to 1960s earthquake standards, you know. They wouldn't probably build them the same way today. To be four miles from the San Andreas Fault is a big deal. It's good to be on bedrock, but all of the pipes are not on bedrock, so they're going to be moving around and probably breaking. Do they automatically stop? Is there a sensor in the pipelines, the ones that are pressurized, not necessarily, both on and off the facility? Are those, do they, can they sense a drop in pressure that means that there's a leak? They've got the pigs going through once every hundred and how many years, five years, or however, whatever it is that they're, that they're inspecting them, but it's not, it's not often. Why don't we have something that works 24 hours a day, seven days a week, like those 3.2 million gallons flowing through it? And it's kind of, and I, the reason why I'm being emphatic is I really believe that nobody, we don't, nobody else has the power. BB CAG can talk, and we can, you know, but we're a community group. They're well aware of how much power we have. You know, we can influence slightly the, some of the regulators, but, you know, you have the power to go to them and say, "Look, you know, we've been very patient with this, with this company, and we live with them as neighbors, and they aren't fixing the aesthetics." That aspect of the safety that's related to that is of utmost importance. And, you know, I don't know what they've ever had in the way of, they're mowing, they say, in the right-of-way by them. I haven't seen one live plant that was ever planted out there. There may have been some, but I've never seen it. And the, so I guess that's about, and I was wondering about the elevation that someone else brought up as far as a tsunami. If the tsunami is, gets through the bridge, it could get to their tank farm, but probably with not much power. But, and I think that the Alton Environmental Company's information, I've never heard before anywhere, it's pretty interesting, that they definitely knew that there was free product and dissolved hydrocarbons at the time they did that. I guess it's probably proprietary information for SP that maybe shouldn't even be out, but it's, from our point of view, it's good that it's out. So, I hope you'll sort of bring them to task and say, "Every year, we want this information from you," you know. And rather have, and this gentleman said, "Well, it's not public information." Well, anything that is a public safety issue ought to be public information. And why don't you guys have the rap that the Regional Water Quality Control Board is making them adhere to? You should have it, so that you can see what's supposed to be done, and you can comment on it if you, I mean, maybe it's a closed issue now, but maybe it isn't. And I just, I mean, we'll try, from the BB CAG's point of view, to be supportive of what you would want done, and which I know is protect public safety, but you guys are the ones that can do the most. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, no, maybe he can answer some of the questions that Clara brought up, especially in regards to your valves, are they automatic shut-off valves? The pipeline, do you have overflow sensors if it reaches?
The pipeline monitors at the control centers, the operators can see the pipeline pressure. They can see the flow at the, where the product is leaving a facility. They can see pressure along at different places where we have sensors. They can see the flow at the receiving facility. So, it is monitored while it's operating, okay? The valves are positioned periodically, probably in the five to seven mile range. Actually, on the peninsula here, they're closer than that. I think they're about two miles apart. Some of them are, they're not automatic shut-off. I want to make a distinction between automatic shut-off and remote-controlled shut-off. Some of them, the operator can remotely shut off if he sees, if he or she sees a drop in pipeline pressure that leads them to believe that there's a problem. They can remotely shut off some of the valves. And the places where we put those is something we evaluate on an annual basis.
Okay. Just in regards to some of the things, have we, and this is to staff, have we received the rap from the Regional Water Quality Control Board in regards to the pipeline that you're aware of?
The rap I'm familiar with is for the terminal itself, and that's been published a couple of years ago. Yes, we, we did have a copy of that.
Okay. And I guess we can just kind of go back and reconnect with them and see where they're at in, because I remember a number of years ago, there was a release that went into the Guadalupe Canal, and that's why Regional Water Quality Board, it was kind of a big issue. So, we can kind of take a look at that and see what's going on. And from, aside from you updating us, we can do an independent update, gather that information. In regards to Bay Area Air Quality Management District, now, they're a self-funded organization. You know, they're run, their board is made up of elected officials, but they don't have any budgetary processes. They get their money through fines. And, you know, having dealt with them in past lives, that they're pretty strict. So, have they fined you recently?
You know, all the air districts are pretty strict. I'm sure that there's been fines at different times at different facilities. I don't have a list of fines here in front of me, and I'm not going to speculate about that. But I'm aware that there have been instances where if we have a seal problem and we have some emissions, we have to report it, and we'll be fined for it. But, you know, that's not something we were interested in. We want to avoid fines, obviously, and maintain our facility as best as we can.
Yeah. How often do they inspect you, on an annual basis, or some...
Nicole, Pete, my experience is the air districts come out when they want to come out, and they come out pretty regularly.
They do.
They might, would you agree with that?
They're at least annually. They come out at least annually.
Thank you.
They come out at least annually. We did have a new inspector come out. She started in February. She came out. They'll come out quite regularly. In fact, a lot of unannounced inspections, they'll just sort of show up, and they're like, "Hey, let me see your burner. Let's go. Let me see these records. Let's go." Every quarter, I send them emissions reports, because we do an inspection. We sniff every single valve and every single connection in our yard. There's more than 2,000 of them. We have to give readings for each one of them, so we report that quarterly to them as well. They're very regularly onsite inspecting us.
Did, did BackMed find the acronym? Did they find any releases?
No, not recently. I've gone back so far till about 2008. We've had some breakdown reports that we reported to them since that we've had issues. They've come out and inspected after we've repaired those. There have been no issues.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do we have, do we have a copy of that report, or does our fire chief have it? No? No? I don't?
Not from air.
You don't get any reports?
Not from air.
Not from air. State Fire Marshal.
You get your reports from the state fire marshal?
The state fire marshal gets the reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you mind please?
The only information we get is the inspection reports completed by the state fire marshal, who has a responsibility for the Federal Department of Transportation to do the inspections of the pipelines. And that's it. That's all we receive. We don't have anything to do with the other environmental, water, air, we have nothing to do with that.
Is it, is it possible for us to get it, or is it not possible for us to get it? And what would it take for us to get it?
I don't know as it relates to, to the air and water. I'm not sure how that works.
Would you, could you check with your sources and determine how, if it's possible for us to get that?
Copies of the air?
Yes.
Air reports?
Mm-hmm.
I would think it's probably public information, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, could for say, I?
Yes, sir.
I think one of the, the values of having this presentation tonight and having an opportunity earlier today to meet with some of the people from Kinder Morgan is that I think we have perhaps a new day in terms of communication between the company and the city. So I think that there, we certainly understand, although the city doesn't have a direct regulatory oversight in a number of these areas, we can play a role in terms of kind of bringing that information together. So let me work with the staff, and we'll try, try to put together kind of an overarching kind of report format of these various elements that people have concerns on, air, water, the issues with regards to safety, and, and we can come back to the council at some future meeting with, with that information, and also perhaps have Kinder Morgan come back at a future meeting also to, to kind of go through some of that.
Thank you. And perhaps you could convey to them that we are really interested now. We're not sitting on our laurels expecting them to maybe share something with us.
I, I think they understand. I think they're getting that message tonight. We preform, we pre-warned them that there was a lot of bent up concern in the community over a number of years on a number of these issues, and I, I think we're having a good airing out of some of those tonight.
Did you have something?
Yes, I did.
Would you?
Thank you very much.
I have another.
Thank you. You mentioned something about, to the fact that, you know, you're not a very popular business in Brisbane. No city, no community would want to see tank farms right in front of their homes. I know anytime I want to take a picture of the bay, I really want to make sure that there is nothing of those fancy tanks in, in those pictures. And it has nothing to do with the people who are working there. It is not a good business. It's not, it's, it's a vital service that you provide, I agree, and I wish it wasn't in our backyard. So, huh?
Front yard.
Front yard. So, you are there. The best thing we can do is to be able to work together, to make it as safe as we can from, for our community, to be a good partner with our city, to communicate. After all, we are in the same area. We're in Northern California, we're in San Francisco Bay Area. Truly, if we can work together, keep each other informed, it doesn't have to be a disaster for you guys to say, I wish we would have done that, we wish we would have done that. We don't want that point to happen. I don't want to see any of the community member here to get cancer or this or that because of some negligence from a business that was not truly welcomed in Brisbane. So if you could work, know that it's your here, and we really want to see as safe as we can, as beautiful as we, you can. I can imagine it's a source of pride for you to come to work every day and see nice fence out there, nice plants. It must be a part of you that would wish to have that, and then all it takes is to give some priority for something that you don't even remember when it was inspected. So I appreciate that it's in your plate, and I'd like to ask you to have that put in fast track. And we are planning for the Baylands development. I don't know how engaged you are in knowing what's happening and how you can get involved in that partnership and make that area to be a best energy, environment, energy source that we could possibly can. And hope we continue having this dialogue and meetings and, on a regular basis.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if I can just, you know, just piggyback on that, I mean, I'm sure you're aware that we have this potential large development.
I'm aware.
Right? And, and, you know, the community is putting a lot of energy into it, and, of course, the, the landowner for the site also wants to have it be a nice development. And of course, you have this facility here, which, as you mentioned, is not going away. And so, like our city manager has said, I mean, this is a new, perhaps a new, a new era for communication between Kinder Morgan and the city of Brisbane. And I'm asking you, you know, if, you know, your participation, you know, how accessible will you be, you know, moving forward and, as part of the process?
Well, I mean, obviously, obviously, we're, we're here tonight.
Yes, I know, and I think that's great.
And I extended an offer to meet with various council members to discuss community issues. So let's, let's, let's keep talking to each other as we move forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I would be calling you, no doubt.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I have another citizen that would like to say something. John? Mr. Burr.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Christopher Burr, and I'm proud to be a lifelong resident of Brisbane. You can probably imagine that I opposed this, the building of this tank farm when it was first proposed, but it was one of those things where Brisbane's going to get rich off this bad thing. And of course, that never works out for us. It would seem to me that Brisbane ought to learn the lesson that we can't trust outsiders or rely on them. And a good example of that, of course, is the regulators. This thing has been polluting the environment for years, and nobody does anything about it. Nobody does anything effective. Why not? Because the corporate polluters own the regulators. Their captives are the corporate polluters. A good example of that is what you're seeing right now in Japan. The hot corporate polluter is now dumping radioactive water into the Pacific Open Ocean, millions of gallons of radioactive material. And of course, we get that too. You know, that's coming to us too. That's all part of the world system here. And this has been a public nuisance from the day one. And I don't think this particular company, this corporation, has a great track record either. I think they've been held up to, to, uh, public ridicule a number of times. They don't have a good track record, and we can't trust them. We can't trust anybody. We can't trust the DTSC, we can't trust the Califor, the Water Board, we can't trust the airport. This, this facility was cited as the absolute worst toxic air polluter in the entire Bay Area. Now, you would think that Richmond or someplace with the big refineries would be the worst, but no, it was right here in Brisbane. And how long did that go on? Years, years and years. You people have to step up to the plate and do something about this to protect this community. It is a public nuisance. All environmental law is based on the public nuisance law. That's, that's what you're able to do. You're able to order them to abate the public nuisance. You're able to actually hire the people to go in and correct, make, take corrective measures, and you give them the bill. That's how the public nuisance law works. All environmental laws are based on the cities, and also the city's inherent power to regulate public nuisance. You should step up to the plate here and start putting together some effective public nuisance legislation to protect us from this kind of threat. Now, in terms of safety, I doubt if there are any good sensors out there or sniffers, especially on the pipeline. But technology does exist today where we could do that. You should order that. Cell phones are, almost any kind of application you can think of can be cheaply done on a cellphone now. They could be placed every 100 feet or so. You know, we're seeing more and more engineering failures all over the world. The engineers told people, hey, don't worry about this nuclear facility, it's safe, it's designed to withstand earthquakes. That was said here when this thing was brought to the public. Now, there's no model that I know of that shows what would it look like if all those things exploded at once? Would it suck all the air out of Brisbane so everybody suffocated? How about the idea of putting a polytoxic high school right next to this hugely polluted facility? Isn't that a great idea? Let's put kids down there so they can all get cancer. Huh? Yeah, good idea. Okay. And, and their so-called remediation, I have yet to see them out dredging the lagoon, digging up the sediment that's polluted there. They're not doing anything effective to protect the lagoon. They're not doing anything in the bay either. Doctor Lee, who's, you know, one of the foremost authorities on this, said there wasn't even any wildlife testing, like fish. They haven't even looked at any fish out here, caught a fish and examined it, see what's there? Not even that. People are eating those fish, and they're getting a big dose of mercury while they're doing it too. So America has weak regulations, some of the weakest regulations in the world, California too. Europe is, is, is at the lead. They're far, far better in Europe. They have the REACH law there, which regulates 80,000 chemicals produced by corporations. We look at like 1,100 versus 80,000. Bunch of nasty chemicals were grandfathered into our regulations, like G D T and, you know, some really nasty things were glossed over, mercury. And any of this toxic remediation stuff you look at today for Brisbane, they don't even talk about mercury. It's all over the place out there. This is a mess out there. This is an absolute national disaster, what we have here in Brisbane. The entire Baylands toxic waste dump, severe point, the whole thing is just an environmental nightmare, and you guys got to step up and do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
I had a question for City of?
I'm sorry.
Hal, John was referring to the public nuisance law saying that we can order or do work and then charge them for it. Can you comment on that?
That's true.
Well, as an abstract, that's correct, but it really depends on how you define a nuisance and whether it would be a nuisance of a type defined in state law. I don't want to get into the whole issue of whether there's anything out there that would be within the city's jurisdiction. They are already heavily regulated, as the speaker has told you, by any number of state and federal agencies. There could be some local nuisance under our local ordinance, in which case, yeah, we would have the authority to request that it be abated and go in and, and do the abatement work. Whether that goes to the point of the operation of an entire tank farm, I would, I would raise some question as to the scope of the city's jurisdiction there, if there's federal and state authorities that would have priority over our own local nuisance law. So I guess it would depend on the type of nuisance, whether it's a nuisance of a local nature within the jurisdiction of the city to enforce. And so I would say is, in theory, yeah, the city can abate nuisances, but you'd have to know what type of nuisance you're dealing with. City would have to have jurisdiction to abate it, and it would be of a type that we would have the capability of abating. So I, you know, I can't answer an abstract question with a, with a concrete answer beyond that.
There also was the reference to if the tank exploded at once, what would happen? And maybe our fire marshal, his comment, if, if, yeah. I mean, what is the chance? I mean, could you need, you know, what, three things for something like that to happen? Can you, can you just address that?
As I mentioned, the, the tanks are not, are not pressurized, okay? So, I mean, that's just not a feasible scenario.
So if a, if a, if a tank caught on fire, what would, what could you expect? If there was a fire?
I'm not a firefighter, but my understanding is typically what happens is that if, if you do have a tank fire, one of the things the, the first responders first do is try to secure the, the nearby tanks by directing water and making sure that the nearby tanks are cooled so that you don't have a scenario where you might have, you know, one tank cause a problem with another. Now, again, I'm not a firefighter, but that, but that's my understanding, is that a lot of times the focus is on preventing any kind of multiple tank issues. So, so to me, that, that's just not a feasible scenario.
You just don't think that would happen?
No.
So none of the, none of the tank farms that Kinder Morgan operates that, that you're aware of have ever exploded?
No. Not in terms of all of the tanks exploding at once or something. I mean, this is not a feasible scenario.
No, but sometimes one?
But when we deal with emergency response issues, we really need, really need to focus on what's feasible. And that's what our training exercise in June is about, is to try to, to, to take a look at if we had an incident, let's, let's get our people, let's get first responders together, let's talk about it. Let's talk about it, how we're going to handle it, what would our incident command look like, what would be rational, well-thought-through steps that we could go through? So the, to me, that's the kind of training that, that, that helps in terms of us being prepared.
So, so really, kind of the key, before you answer, Nicole, the key is kind of, is the pressurization, not necessarily the medium, or media, it's in there?
That an explosion implies the pressure there as well. Tanks could catch fire in the case of a catastrophic incident, but they, they're not going to explode in the way that I believe the previous gentleman was talking about at once. Just want to reiterate that portion.
Chief, do you agree with that?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
And then they further, if there was an?
If there was an incident there, we would be in command. We would be handling the incident. We do know how to handle the incident. They would be taking actions to eliminate the flow to the tank, take the, take the fuel out of tanks. There's a number of things that they'd be doing in order to deal with that incident. But yeah, it will catch fire, but it will not explode. We will not have a San Bruno incident, if that's what people think. Even the lines that go from here to the airport are a fluid. If it breaks, it pours out. It doesn't expand or explode.
Okay. Thank you. You know, remediation of the lagoon or potential stuff going in there, and Si, you referred to a breach in a pipeline back in the 80s, and I think this is before you owned it. Would that possibly be in the Regional Water Quality Board's medial action plan or identification that?
I don't know the specific answer to your question right now, sir. I can certainly reach out to the case handlers over at the regional board and ask them if they are familiar with any unfinished action related to an event, perhaps back in the 80s, as to whether there was any cleanup required for that out there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All the questions.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for coming. Sorry for such a test meeting, but that's the, you see how people feel about this, this tank farm, so anything you can do to alleviate it, thank you. Okay. Next, I, and I didn't have this on the agenda, we have a congressman from San Bruno? Council member?
Council member.
Thank you.
You're by yourself or with a friend there?
I, I did bring a friend, and I'll introduce him in just one second.
Thank you, sir.
So let me start by just saying good evening to honorable Brisbane City Council and some very good friends here at the city council, so it is really my pleasure to be here in an official capacity tonight on behalf of the people, the citizens of San Bruno. And the purpose of my visit is simply to say thank you, because we did receive a lot of help after the Glenview fire, and I also wanted to provide just a brief update on the recovery process so far.
And so, our fire department left. They're probably talking with them out there.
Okay. So as everyone is probably aware, on September 9th, we suffered an incredible tragedy in San Bruno. But also, as a result of that fire, we experienced an incredible outpouring of support from the entire community. And it's really why I'm here tonight is to really express our gratitude specifically to Brisbane. We have, we have the county mutual aid system, which has been in place, and besides some smaller instances where we've shared resources, I believe that until now, we hadn't really put that system to the test, and I believe now that we have, and that concept did become a reality on that night. I've been told that within the first 48 hours, 500 firefighters and 300 police officers responded to the, to the incident in Glenview. I have some specific instances here, some, some highlights of Brisbane's participation through the North County Fire Authority. I have some specific instances here, some highlights of Brisbane's participation through the North County Fire Authority. Brisbane provided us with fire personnel and equipment on that night. Police chief and police officers responded to our request for mutual aid. Also, Brisbane provided additional staff supporting with our public information officer operation in our EOC. And there was also community development staff which helped with some of the planning assistance in the days following. There were people that assisted in the EOC with some of the more clerical tasks of finance and logistics, which we found out quickly were a lot more than we were prepared to handle, even with all of the training and practicing. And also, the people of Brisbane were involved in a number of fundraisers and provided us direct financial aid. And that aid is still being distributed to the people who are most impacted by the fire. So, definitely that spirit of support was a great inspiration to all of us across the region. I wanted to also mention that, you know, of course, the road to recovery is gonna be a long, slow process, but we are seeing some progress. There are some homeowners that are moving along in the planning process. And we're actually hoping that by this summer, we can see some construction starting and that process beginning, really the rebirth of that community. I also wanted to mention, and it really is appropriate that we chose tonight to be here, part of what we're remaining focused on. And really, it's so that the lives that were lost were not lost in vain. And really, we are maintaining a very strong interest in the investigation and the actions that are resulting from that investigation that is still ongoing. We've seen a number of state and federal legislators taking actions to improve oversight and to make sure that certain safety measures are put in place. It's really great to see all of you taking an interest in your local infrastructure, asking the right questions, and really hearing the references to San Bruno is reassuring to us that the incident is not forgotten and that we can definitely make some good out of this tragic event. Hopefully, that, you know, working together across all our communities, we can prevent anything like what happened in San Bruno from ever occurring again anywhere in anyone's community. So, on behalf of the city council and the city staff and all the people of San Bruno, I wanted to extend our gratitude and thanks for all the support and help that you've provided to us. And also with me here tonight is our finance director, Mr. Ed Suen. And we brought along a proclamation signed by our mayor that we would like to give to you. And I don't want to read all of the details of what's in here, but the "therefore" at the very end reads, "The San Bruno City Council on behalf of the San Bruno community does hereby recognize and express sincere appreciation for the tremendous support and assistance provided by the city of Brisbane." So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment too? After you accept that?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say something to the city of Brisbane and its officials. I remember the year that a few of us went to Emmitsburg for emergency partners training and so forth, but never realized that one day, all those trainings are going to come very handy. But I think your city, the staff, your community truly went beyond the training. You guys set a standard. Everything was done in such a way, so perfect, so on time, so organized, that it really helped to build confidence in communities that yes, cities can be prepared and do everything pretty much to its perfection. So, on behalf of our city, we'd like to congratulate all of you. I think the council is wonderful. You have one of the best city managers, after our city manager. But, so, please take this—
Put my boots on.
Yeah. So, take this to your council too. We appreciate you being here at the same time. Give our appreciation for their effectiveness and great job they've done. Thank you.
So, you know, some of our staff that really helped out are here tonight. So, you know, our chief of police and President Andy Broer, city engineer and EOS commander. And I'm not sure who else went there, but I know quite a few officers and all the firefighters went there. So, yeah. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I think we've had oral communications. So, unless there's someone else? No? Okay. Our next order of business is the consent calendar. It's a pleasure, council.
Move approval of consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Thank you very much. And the new business, consider requests from Dale Conway regarding the waiver of permit fees for Ring of Fire nonprofit fitness and boxing program for youth.
I think, didn't we have this before? Have we talked about it?
This is different, but Hal, I'm gonna step off the dais on this.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can just quickly explain the difference between this and what you saw before. What you saw before was a request to waive the planning application fees. This is actually going a step further to the building permit fees. I would note that CSG, who is our contract, who does the plan check and the building inspections, has agreed to waive their fee so that this isn't all on the city. It's our contractor would not be charging for their services in this case.
So, there would be no cost to the city or—
Essentially.
If there is any cost, how much would that be?
If there isn't any cost—
There isn't zero.
Well, it's a—the fee waiver, if— Under normal circumstances, it would have been $1,300.
Okay. I don't have any problem. I make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Richardson, second by Councilmember Mayor Portem Waldo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Thank you. Staff report, city manager, report on upcoming activities.
I think Dale Conway wants to say a little something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on in, yeah.
You're ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Appreciate everything you guys done. City staff, like to thank all of you. And I'd like to just say that the city of Brisbane has really, really stepped up for our boxing program. The merchants, contractors, a lot of people have donated to us, and that's the only way we can run our program because it is a nonprofit. So, we really appreciate what you guys have done for us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. And reach out to all those kids in Brisbane. Get them in the gym.
Yes.
Okay.
A city clerk, let the record show that Councilmember Conway is back. Staff reports. City managers report on upcoming activities.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
No report tonight, okay. Mayor, councilman, subcommittee. One thing that perhaps of interest that came up quite by chance. I found out that the city of Redwood City and now the city of South San Francisco have done away with all the paperwork with respect to council meetings and the other committee meetings and have issued their people iPads. I think that's the name of it. So that everything is done electronically, and they're saving a bundle of money on paper, on use of paper.
One of the council members from Redwood City told me that they have, I believe, $38,000 or $48,000 worth of paper reductions on getting packets to the city council members and so forth. Everything would be in that iPad, emails and so forth. And if you wanted to do further research while you're reading things, you can go to the minutes, you can go to website, the codes. Everything is linked in, and they're finding it to be extremely useful. And I like—I talked about this to the city manager to look at the possibility of us having one of those iPads and not get all this paperwork. And whoever wants to have it, then they can come to the city hall and look at it.
Perhaps, Clay, you could come up with some information on this for us?
Yeah, we'll research and bring it up.
Yeah, for the next meeting or the following meeting, whatever. Thank you.
It would certainly fall under some of our sustainability programs.
Absolutely.
I think you'd have to weigh it out, what the difference is too, you know, for the total cost of, you know, purchasing iPads and, you know, what the lifespan is on that. And that's a cradle-to-grave thing, you know? So, you know, what do we call it? The externalities of it.
Okay.
This paper is recyclable.
Right.
Is there—
Yes, I have.
Any other subcommittee report you have?
I do have a committee report, subcommittee report. On March 31st, myself, councilmember Cliff Lance, staff, and Bert from Airport Noise, couple of our community members, representatives from Virgin Airlines, representative from Congresswoman Jackie Speer were in attendance. I believe we were about 14 of us in the meeting. And the bottom line, not to rehash that five or six, what, four or five hours that we were there, was to do with the fact that maybe they can look into the noise abatement procedure. And it's the same procedure that John Wayne Airport has used to very effectively reduce noise in their communities. And we were—I mean, some of us were really frustrated that why do we have to constantly be passed around? We go to San Francisco, meet with them, and we understand a revelation comes that we need to go to TRACON. We go to TRACON, and TRACON says, you know what? This can really need to be—this need to be handled by San Francisco Airport. So, the bottom line with this, there are two procedures that they could possibly do in Brisbane. One is this noise abatement procedure, and the other one is RNAV. RNAV is complicated. It has to do with environmental impact review and analysis. That takes a long time. With noise abatement procedure, they require to get cooperation and assistance from the airlines that are impacting. And it's—right now, our problem is the airport is trying to meet the capacity. And in order to get all the flights getting out the ground, TRACON is trying to scatter them in such a way, if they're going every two minutes, they're trying to send one person this way, another one that way, another one that way. And they're right now—they said that they had the capacity, correct me, Clay, if I'm wrong, to have 60 flights per hour. They are right now at 40 flights. Just imagine with the new opening of the terminal too, with the expansion of Virgin Airlines that thinking increasing tremendously. What would be the impact in Brisbane if they have to have 60 flights per day, per hour? It's going to be very, very tough. Congresswoman Jackie Spears' conversation that I had after the meeting, he was happy that there are at least solutions that we can pursue, was not happy with the fact that we're being passed around from one hand to the other hand. But at least we're going to the procedure. At least we're trying to get agreement from one another. Yesterday at lunch, Fiona Ma was at the house in Brisbane, in my house, and I really wanted her to get a better understanding of what I'm talking about, what's happening in Brisbane and so forth. And she's also very, very interested in helping. She's from San Francisco, works directly with John Martin. And this noise abatement procedure is something that between San Francisco and airlines, if they agree to do it, I believe it would be probably beneficial to us, even though there is no procedure that is not going to have weaknesses or drawbacks. Everything they do, there's going to be some positives and some negatives. But at least it's something that we're going to pursue. And I understand city clerk is directing the staff to check on the abatement procedure that is taking place in John Wayne Airport. And we would have further information on that. That's one. Any—Clark, any question, anything on that?
Yeah. To the city attorney. So, noise, is that considered a nuisance? That can be considered a nuisance, right?
Yes, it can.
And so, earlier, we're talking about nuisance abatement.
There have been private actions by individual residents who are the ones claiming to have been disturbed against airports. They have not been generally effective because you might get some nominal damages or whatever, but— And then there have been some recent case holdings that have impaired the ability to use that remedy by holding that the—you know, there was no local control over some of the routing of the aircraft. So, I think the avenue that Councilmember Richardson is following is probably the most productive because local agencies that have tried to bring actions against airports on the more— In earlier cases, there was a greater success. More recent cases, the courts have essentially held that they've been preempted by the federal regulations. And again, there were some earlier cases involving like class actions by individual property owners, which I think today would have a harder route to follow. So, I think your best bet is really to try to deal with the regulatory agencies to get some changes in the routing of the takeoffs. And that's probably the best way to spend our resources and energies.
Sure. Yeah, I agree. I'm just curious, is like individuals, if they wanted to take actions like in small claims courts or whatever for each individual incident that happens? I mean, because if it's—a one flyover is considered a nuisance?
Yeah. I think those suits now would have a greater difficulty than they had some years ago under more recent court rulings that have seemed to recognize the concept of preemption to the degree of not allowing some of those actions to proceed.
Interesting.
At the same time, the people that went with us, the community members, I was so proud of them. You would not believe how much homework they had done. They had prepared reports, they had made analysis, they were able, they were in a position to prove that we have been getting 33% increase of flight over Brisbane. They have documentation, they have everything to prove to them. And even though the airport does not want to call it shifting noise, we do believe that shift in noise has taken. With all this increased flight on departure that is taking place, for them to decide to send it over to Brisbane, we consider that to be a shift. But for them means they are trying to meet the need for capacity.
They have some really appalling single incidents. And I don't know if you recall, probably a couple of weeks ago, I think it was a Saturday morning about 1:30 a.m. I had to wake everybody up in Brisbane.
Correct.
And they're just flying from west to east.
Correct.
Flew right over the mountain. I mean, and it was 1:30 a.m.
Correct.
I mean, it woke me up. I don't know about anybody else, but I mean, it literally shook.
Of course, southwest is kind of alleviating the problem for a while.
Yes, with this. So, truly now, if we can get—Fiona is very interested in helping with this because—
Because she's running for state senate.
Well, of course, but Jerry Hill does that too. I mean, Jerry Hill is going to be planning to run for that. And believe me, of the two, if you put them together, I believe Fiona Ma would be to deliver more. Jerry Hill tells you what you want to hear. And I'm saying that in public. Okay? But I—
I'll tell you in public, I don't believe that.
Well, I believe—okay, but that's the opinion. I'm not going to talk about personalities, but I want to talk about—anybody wants to help us? Let's go get the help.
Okay.
All right.
Now, the next order of business is oral communications, number two. Is there a member of the public that would like to address the council matters not on the agenda? The second oral communication, it's kind of a—
Actually, we did have one other subcommittee meeting is the—
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
The water and sewer—
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Subcommittee. And, you know, we met, and of course, staff's gonna come forward with a recommendation that we approved. But that recommendation is gonna, you know, be an increase in water. to, you know, be an increase in water and the reasons why. And so, the, the presentation will include to really kind of educate the public and, and council members in more detail as far as what we're faced with in the future. So, that was the purpose of our meeting. And so, we will be coming forward with that. When would that be, Clay? In June or July?
We'll place it on your next agenda to get the authorization to go out for the two-eighteen vote.
Right.
And then we'll come back in June, and we'll do the full presentation on the whys and wherefores of the, the rate increase, which have to do with everything from San Francisco's hetch, hetchy system to issues that we're dealing with our own system.
Yeah.
If, when you did that, I just remember also something else, if I may, talk about that in regards to high-speed rail and our communities. As you know, Quentin Cop is no longer on high-speed rail. He's out, and they've already replaced him. And there was a consultant from the city manager that retired from Harley, Harvey. He's no longer with them. He's not working with them. So, they've, totally all of this are out. In some material, that private group that originally started with three, four cities, that they were talking about what is the impact of high-speed rail in, in their communities, they started this private group that they were meeting enclosed. And they were talking about what, how they can benefit from high-speed rail in their communities. And that group was created in direct opposition of Peninsula Coalition of Cities. Mayor got a letter last time that wanted us to sign that letter, to go to the state. And I wasn't quite comfortable with the letter. We didn't know anything about it and so forth. So, I attended the meeting, this policy group. And the policy group has tweaked the letter to make sure that individual cities' needs are looked at and respected. So, the general manager, CEO of High-Speed Rail is going to be at the next meeting on April twentieth that I'll be attending to give feedback. Caltrain admitted that by putting all their eggs behind high-speed rail, the electrification and all these plans that they have in connection with high-speed rail, might have not been a good plan. And they're realizing that maybe that's not what they should have done.
That's why Mr. Doty went to Florida.
Correct. Correct. So-
The one who was so in love with Caltrain.
Correct. So, there's all kinds of things are happening, and I'll keep you informed. And that letter, as it's getting to be revised, might not be a bad letter to put there. But the letter is already gone, but they're adding all the cities that are in the corridor. But I'll keep you posted after that meeting.
Thank you. We have motion to adjourn to a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.